Ooh, first track. It is 6:32, so I'm calling the meeting to order. Ms. Karen is not going to be here tonight. I believe she's out of town. And Mr. Ben Harvey and my son is coming because I talked to him this morning. So, but we have a forum, so we like to start on time when we can. First of all, I'd like to read a statement from the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. We're asking all of our boards and committees to please read this statement before their meetings. The Situate Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Having said that, I'm calling the meeting to order. Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda as written?
So, love.
Moved by Ms. Canfield, second by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero, motion carries. I know we have at least one walk-in tonight. Siska, would you like to come on?
Yes, I'll just take five minutes off of my time. Thanks to Andrew, we have this wonderful QR code on this side. We just wanted to make sure.
Could you tell us who you are?
Oh, I am so sorry.
We have many people watching us on TV. And please have a seat.
Thank you. My name is Siska Humphrey. I am the Chair of the Beautification Commission. And I'm here to just make sure that the Select Board also knows that our Shipshape Day this year is on Saturday, April 30th. And again, as I said, Andrew has been the provider of QR codes. And Sue Casey is doing a lot of the graphics, so I just want to make sure that you know that. So, we have various signs that will help people to know that this is happening. Donna Bangard is again very involved and has received all of the permissions to post a banner, the week of the Shipshape event. We also received permission to put signs at the rotary leading up. And to, we will again have a variety of posters that we can hang up. In addition to April the 30th being Shipshape Day, we will also kick off Plant Situate. And this year, again, people are counting on the marigolds, both the kids in schools because they feel really pleased that they know that this is our plant, but also the greenhouses are already getting ready to give more, put out marigolds. In addition to that, we are also, there will be a lottery for the kids to participate in, so they can get a marigold to take home. It's too early to plant them, but that way the kickoff has happened and then we will do more publicity. We also did get permission from the town to put up our marigold sign again for a month. And then the other part that we're planning to do for Plant Situate is to give out packets with sunflower seeds, and they're small packets, and that will be the front of the packet. So, that's what I passed out. And then the last thing is that the Situate Garden Club will again join us with examples of garlic mustard, plants of garlic mustard, and how to eradicate them. And that was extremely successful last year. So, that's all I have.
So, plant and weed, right?
Plant and weed.
And pick up trash.
And pick up trash. And it's a good time to do it because ever since the snow melted, all of this trash has...
Everything shows.
Yeah. You know, has come to the surface.
Yes, yes. Very good.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Any questions from the board?
No, just thank you. I look forward to Shipshape Day every year.
I know, and you know, I hope to see it last year, 600 volunteers. We had lots and lots of materials that were collected, and a lot of the trash was recycled and brought was sent to Southeastern Mass Waste Facility to be burned for, to generate electrical energy. So, I thought that was pretty cool, too.
That is, that's great. So, that's what you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, coming in.
Thank you. Thank you, too.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to the Town Administrator Report. Mr. Woodrow.
Good evening. Actually got a bunch of new stuff from yesterday, so people who watched yesterday, the update, we got some new stuff today. COVID numbers, obviously, we don't change those from Monday to Tuesday. Mavind data was 17, up from 10 last week. Total number of cases reported on the Board of Health was 21, up from 18 of the previous week, so it got up slightly. Our positivity rating for the past 14 days was 2.11, up from 1.71 of last week. Plymouth County was up to 2.02 from 1.71 of last week. And the statewide positivity rating for the past seven days was 2.47, up from 2.08. So, those numbers are all trending up. Statewide, there were 33 individuals in the ICU and 12 people being intubated. We're going to continue to monitor the numbers, but speaking to our health agent, really, he said the numbers to watch right now are hospitalizations and ICU people, because so many people are vaccinated in Massachusetts. We should see cases, but we're hoping we don't see the serious cases of the hospitalizations. There is a new variant, Omicron variant BA2. It's now the dominant strain in the United States. So, we are still urging people to be vaccinated. If you've been vaccinated, to get boosted. If you've been boosted and you are over the age of 50 and/or autoimmune compromised, you are eligible for a second booster four months after your first booster. For anybody who had a Pfizer booster, 12 and over, auto-compromised or 50 and older, no apparent underlying conditions, for Moderna, it's 18 and over for the same condition. So, those are now available, and you get those at all the regular places. I'm pleased to announce the auction for the old Council on Agent was held last week. There were 12 bidders, and we received 18 bids in the course of the auction. The high bid was $465,000 to sell that property. If we add that to the proceeds for the sale of the minor fire station, which was $553,240, and the $953 we got for auctioning off the contents of the old Council on Agent building, we brought in $1,019,193, which will go to offset the debt from the senior center, the new senior center. That $1,019 is 8% of the total authorized cost of $12,232,450. If you add in the $255,000 and change we received in private donations, we've reduced the tax burden of that project on the taxpayer by $1,274,874.46, or 10.4% of the project cost with an average savings of $155 off the tax bills. To start, and it goes down as the cost of the project goes down. We also had another online auction last week of surplus vehicles and equipment. This auction netted the town $79,103, the highest bid being $23,800 for the 2007 Azuzu Sweeper Vac Truck. The general fund items, that money goes back to the general fund and will eventually go to free cash. Those items sold by Water Source and other of our enterprise accounts will go back to those accounts that eventually become retained earnings. But another $79,000 for getting whatever surplus equipment. I know Lorraine sent you the email, but the South Shore Irish Heritage Trail is pleased to announce that Sea Plymouth, the official tourist site of Plymouth County, was awarded a $90,000 grant. The grant will finance an advertising campaign to law tourists from the northeastern United States, eastern Canada, and Ireland to the newly established South Shore Irish Heritage Trail. Also included in the grant will be printage and signage. The Trail Committee is most grateful to Sea Plymouth for their work and for the in-kind contribution of administrator and graphic work exceeding $30,000. The Committee also acknowledges with great pride to support of the title of Situate from the very beginning of the trail planning. The launch ceremony for the South Shore Irish Heritage Trail will take place on May 22nd at 1:00 p.m. at the Bandstand in Cole Parkway. If people were down at Hammerock today, they saw the barge and the tugboat. They began work on trying to bring up the Bing Bing. The plan is to raise that and take it to Fall River. They were unsuccessful today as the wind picked up and the weather changed, so they came back in. Once they have it floated, they will actually bring it into Situate Harbor. They will secure it, make it ready for transport. It'll take about a day or two, and then it will transport to Fall River. They are expecting to be back out there tomorrow, but that's going to be weather-dependent, so if you see the boats off Hammerock, they're actually working on raising the Bing Bing. A couple more things real quick. Whittles Walker's open, it opened Friday for the season. Down at Sea, the new clubhouse, it's absolutely beautiful. The Hibernian has gotten their furniture in, they're starting to set up the clubhouse, so we expect that to be open shortly. But we're looking forward to a really great season down at Whittles Walker, the new clubhouse, the new concessions. Ian's settling into his role in his second year down there, so we think things will be great down there. The carbon activation process at the water treatment plant, the carbon is back, it has been reloaded into the plant. The plant is currently running right now. It's running to waste to make sure everything's running correctly. So, we are on schedule to get that back up and running before the end of the week. In the meantime, we do have a full water ban back on. We were very lucky, thanks to the water department and the fire department, last week we had a fire and a water main break while the water treatment plant was offline. Due to great work by both of those departments, we were able to keep people in water and make sure everything was working right. And it turned out very well until Marshfield shut off Hammerock's water at the end of the day without telling us. So, there is no outdoor water use until next Monday. We are on a full water ban until the water department lists that. Another reminder, if you haven't got your transfer station sticker, they have expired, they expired last week, so please come in or you can get them by mail. They're available at the Treasury's office. And finally, I know the board will remind everybody, but Monday night is town meeting. We have a very full warrant, a lot of stuff on the agenda, so we hope to see people at town meeting, 7 o'clock Monday night at the high school. That's what I have for tonight.
So, Jim, is Goring getting compliance?
They were very close to being in compliance. Their pile was a little high, but they were working on it. I haven't got the reason as to why that particular fire broke out. Normally, they break out in the back where the older material is. This one was in the front with newer material. So, I haven't got the report from the fire department, but they had gotten that pile way down, they had done a lot of work. So, the pile might have been a little high, but it wasn't the situation they were in before. So, the reason for that fire hasn't become clear at this point.
Any questions?
Can I ask a random question, please?
No. Yes.
I can't find the backup on the server.
Well, I have it online, but I can't email it to myself. I confuse it. But give me one second.
Great.
We have technology issues sometimes. Yep.
We can go ahead.
So, discuss vote new common victory license Lucky Cafe LLC, 48 new Driftway, Mary Ellen and Chris Stoddard owners. Hi. Mary, nice to meet you.
Nice to see you.
Well, inquiring minds want to know. Mine was not closing. The harbor's not closing. Good, we like the harbor location, but you're going to... It's all right. So, you're going to be in the new area?
Yes, so the far end of the building that is, one end is the convenience store, and the other end will be our location.
Where's the barbecue?
Inside the convenience store is my understanding.
Okay, all right. Because the word barbecue came up in one of our meetings with the management and the property, and this has sort of taken on its own weight on my hand. Where's the barbecue? So, tell us about what you're planning. What do you want to talk about?
Yeah, I'm sure the building's permitted at this point, so you've been understanding the layout. It's a rectangular building. There's an ingress egress pathway that's, you know, been approved on the site. We are occupying the end that borders that ingress egress section. We are absolutely, actually segregated completely from the C store. There is a common walkway that allows for some connectivity, but we're essentially the end cap of that building. So, we have some window frontage on Driftway. We've got window frontage on that ingress egress pathway, and then some window frontage towards the fuel pumps. There's a small outdoor concrete patio there that has a few deck chairs type of thing just for some outdoor sipping, if you will. The menu is essentially the same as what we have offered at our two current locations, which is a kind of rich espresso coffee offering, some sandwiches, some healthy avocado toasts, and some acai healthy fruit bowls type of stuff. Actually, it's probably something quite different for a fuel station. This is... Yeah. You know, seltzer drinks and more of a kind of healthier solution for consumers.
Very good. More upscale.
Yes.
Does the board have any questions? Tell us.
It's great. Love the store, love to see local business growing and what you're doing. I was still sneaky with lobster sandwich, lobster roll.
Somebody was asking, what's a lobster roll coming? Like Mother's Day, the clothes.
Fishermen are out.
Yeah. Depends on that.
Soon as they can keep the supply chain intact, yeah.
My son doesn't have to look to pan over. He finds a hardship to go to the harbor. I don't know why. Any other questions? Do you want your motion? Andrew, you're going to have to take motions.
Move that the Select Board vote to approve a new 2022 common license to Lucky Cafe LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Goodrich. Second? Second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero. Good luck.
Best of luck. When's it open?
When they open.
Supply chains are...
Yeah, we're waiting for our equipment.
We're hoping to have something established when the C store opens, so at a minimum a coffee kind of offering, and as long as our equipment, our refrigeration equipment can be delivered, which is quite a problem these days, we hope to be open by at least the minimum of the fall.
The fall.
Yeah, yeah. So, summer, some summer traffic solution for coffee and kind of healthy stuff that we can prepare without heavy refrigeration, but refrigeration equipment is quite a problem.
Now, the convenience store is going next, right? Thanks, Lynn.
Right.
When's that open, Jim? Same time?
I think they're kind of running into the same challenges there, so we're trying to, you know, unite and kind of release at the same time, but we understand that we may not be able to do our full offering right from the get-go.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
6:55. Discuss vote Massachusetts School Building Authority Feasibility Study Agreement. Hadley School Superintendent Phil Burkhead and Dr. Dutch, who is here. We're a little bit early. I do want to clarify one thing. I think people will get confused over that, that it says Hadley School. So, those of you who are in the know understand why it says Hadley School and it doesn't say Cushing School, but the intent is to potentially merge two schools.
Ultimately, that is the intent. We had to apply for two separate projects with the NSBA. They approved the one, knowing that our goal is to consolidate the two schools.
So, this is a formal formality here that you're here asking us to sign the letter to fund or to move along in the process. It's the feasibility study part of it, right?
Correct. You've already funded the feasibility study. As part of the eligibility phase, we had, the school district had to identify which, how much we were spending on the different components of the feasibility study, owner project manager, designer, which is the architect, environmental components, and then contingencies. As part of that, they then determine the percent reimbursement for the feasibility study as well as the project, which is in your backup. And then there's a legal component, which also was signed by the council. So, those are the pieces that have to go to the MSBA as a formality, but basically as a commitment from the town to enter into this feasibility agreement. Once we get the, once we vote and we move this along to the MSBA, we then will begin the process of hiring the owner project manager who is there to protect our interests from hiring the designer all the way through construction to choose to keep them on. Glad we're here.
All right. Does the board have questions? I'm sure he wants to have you. Do I want to start with Karen?
I'm sorry, I'm distracted, but I still can't get into my backup, but I did read the backup. No, thank you for clarifying. It is confusing in the language. And I just, one question I had, just because I want to be crystal clear on this. This next phase will also include sort of a new versus renew feasibility, right?
It will. The designer will conduct a study, which will include feedback from the community as well as looking at all sorts of data. And then based on that, would make a recommendation as to whether we would remodel, rebuild, or consolidate and build one new school.
So, my follow-up question to that is, how does that augment the work that was done that brought us to this point? Because that was pretty extensive.
The work that was done to this point would be incorporated into that process, into the decision-making process. It's not abandoned.
And that's starting from scratch?
No.
That was in Rio, wasn't it?
One more question. The OPM, $314,000, is that for the whole project or just this first?
In theory, it's just for this portion. Anything that's not used here would carry over into the project. The likelihood is that that will cover the entire cost throughout the project. You're generally looking at percentages of the total amount appropriated in the feasibility study, and that's why you see that number there.
So, it's way out of whack in terms of if we're just getting the design work done?
Correct.
Correct. So, it's just...
These are just estimates?
These are all estimates. We have no hard figures on this there. These estimates are based on similar-sized schools that were done within the last three years.
Do we have any estimate as to what the entire project would cost? Is it in the range of $60 million, $70 million?
I've seen some numbers of 60 all the way up to 85, but I think a lot is going to depend on the design of the school and what the community chooses to include, keeping in mind that there are some things that the NSBA does not reimburse for.
Right. Which makes that owner project manager number look somewhat small, if it would have carried through the entire project.
And it is. I mean, the time, the time that they're investing and the number of people that are engaged in that is fairly small. It's usually one person. You may have a few hours of some specialized folks, depending on what the project's looking like, through construction. But that number, I think, is practical for the entire project.
For the entire project?
All the way through, yes.
$14,000 to the OPM for a $60, $70 million project?
Yeah.
Seems low to me.
No, I mean, this, I think I made my thoughts on this before, but people have spoken, so I understand that 42%, right? Is that right?
That's the number at this point. It could go, it can't, won't go down, it could go up slightly for some different incentive points.
I just want clarification. The numbers you're giving are always numbers, not that...
That's correct.
One other follow-up question. I don't think so, but I just wanted to know, is the, does the PBC participate in this level, not until it's actual construction?
There's actually a separate school building committee.
So, they...
Yep. Won't be the PBC, it'll be a separate school building committee, just like the middle school was.
I couldn't remember. So, if the board doesn't have any questions, and I don't see anyone in the audience here right now who's, unless Ann has a question? No? All right, so, discuss vote. Do I have a motion?
Move that the Select Board approve to execute the Massachusetts School Building Authority Feasibility Study Agreement for Hadley and the Millennium School.
Second? Second by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck with the next phase.
Thanks.
And do we need the camera? Do you need to help me?
I just restarted it, I'm hoping that'll do it.
Can you help us?
Oh, I'm asleep. So, we are on to item number 705, which I think the board has discussed both. Communication Specialists Contract. Bob Clark, Communication Resources Director. Communication Specialists Contract, these are the people who work in our dispatch, like an old-fashioned word.
Word, I could practice. Thank you for that, yes.
Would you like to tell us what?
Sure, absolutely. So, we're actually, we're currently in the midst of negotiating a new contract for the Communication Specialists for the dispatches. Their contract expired on July 1st, 2021, so they've been working without a contract. It was a bit delayed because they were sort of gathering their bargaining team, but so we really, we were not particularly confident that we'd be able to settle a contract before the end of this fiscal year. And we really didn't want to have a situation in which we potentially would be paying retroactive wages for the, across a different fiscal year. So, we proposed to the union that we actually just settle on a one-year contract, which would mirror the cost of living increases that we've been giving to some of the other units, AMs and Tosca. And we put in one other sort of change we made, and we just added Juneteenth as a holiday, which is something that we did across the board for all town employees. So, what I, we're presenting is a memorandum of agreement for a one-year contract for the Communication Specialists, which would have a 2% cost of living increase and add Juneteenth. And then that would also now give us a little bit more sort of latitude with negotiating the next contract, which would probably just be a two-year with kind of keeping in line with the other contracts.
Questions?
Those of you on the table?
Thank you for negotiating that.
Sure.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the collective bargaining memorandum agreement for SEIU Local 888 Tosca Unit B Communication Specialists bargaining unit for the period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Second? Second by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, motion carries. Thank you.
But also thank you to them. Yeah, no, absolutely, for agreeing to this short-term.
And we're here on the front line. Thank you. Next is discuss vote Cole Parkway Marina Project Engineering Services, $162,500. Steven Moen, harbor master. Hi, Steve.
Hi, how's everybody this evening?
Very good.
Moving, having schedules, nice.
Don't sit and chat, keep going. So, you're ahead of schedule, huh? Let me see if I can fix that.
I suppose maybe you may know, maybe Jim knows, for all the smart children in the world here in Situate, they love the tugboats and they love to see the machines come out. Is that, is the pulling that Bing Bing out of the water going to be visible from the shore or?
Probably from, you know, down there.
Yeah, you can see it from the beach, yeah. I mean, most of that area is private beach, but you can see it between the houses, see the boats, yeah, down the tide, check it out.
I have a few people with tiny children who love that stuff.
They'd love to see the tugboats going to know.
Yeah, yeah, they do.
You could probably see it from the public beach. It's pretty visible.
Okay. Very good, thank you. So, tell us about Cole Parkway. It seems like we're already renovating that.
We are.
Yes.
So, this is a contract for engineering permitting and design services for rehabilitation of town marina Phase Two. This is part of the $1 million grant that we received to replace the docks. The first part was about $1 million as well, and that put in the piles, doing the mooring blocks, we got an ADA gangway, and the observation deck. So, we went to GEI Consultants. We got a, we sent a RFP to them to come up with a proposal, and they were the same contractor or engineering firm that did Phase One, so they know where all the bodies are.
I wouldn't have said that. Okay.
So, we came up with a plan, and we made sure that they're going to have enough people on staff. So we came up with a plan, and we made sure that they're going to have enough people on staff for this project. Because we plan to have the whole project designed and out to bid by, I believe it was October 1st. So final design will be August 8th. August 8th. It, we go out to bid, and then we give the notice to proceed on October 1st. Contractor would then board the docks. We're doing internal pile guides. Hopefully the finger floats are going to be wider, more accessible to everyone. In areas, they'll be longer. A lot of areas, give us the ability when the bigger boats go away for the weekend, print those out to transients and have a part of the project as well. Also, we're going to take, our plan is to take the two new floats that we bought last year, that we had to buy because they were in poor condition. And we're going to reuse those and adapt those for the sailing team or the preparation department. There's no sense. They're brand-new. There's really nothing wrong with them. We can change the configuration and how they're supported in the water.
And where would you put those?
Those would go out on water.
Oh, okay.
And then when it's time, we pull them into Marina, tie them off, de-ice them like they did.
Because the sailing team, the high school sailing team, has approached the Harbor Community Building redevelopment, whatever we're calling that. I call it Pier 44.
Yep.
They've got some needs, and it sounds like this is...
This is part of it.
Yeah.
Jim had asked me if we could put the sailing floats into the renovation, which we did. So this kind of dovetails into that. But the floats that we're looking to reuse are brand-new. They were used one season. And instead of being flat, they'd be tilted like this, so the sailboats pop onto them.
Get on. So the plan would be to have this completed by next boat in season?
May 1st of next year. Very aggressive plan, but we believe we can get them.
Questions from the board?
So most of the, which side, I guess, you're kind of looking at which area, because most of this is spread out across?
The whole Cole Parkway.
That is the whole, across the whole building.
Questions?
Is there one point you think we should all?
We're hoping, this is part of the design services. When we initially put this out, it would cover everything. We were hoping to go with aluminum. We're probably going to end up back with wood. But I can go back to C-4. They allow you to go back for an amendment, contract amendment for some additional funding, if we have to.
Steve, I think that's your question.
Kind of.
Is it going to be close?
Yes, it should be.
I mean, the price of wood is through the roof right now, so I can't imagine that being...
You know, it's just, we're, we're just, that's why we put in for $1 million. It was the maximum we could apply for. They let you go back for an additional 20%, which we already have matched in hand for. So we would give us almost $1.5 million. Because $200,000 for our match, or $1 million, no, the $50,000 for the match of the $200,000 if we had to ask for, so it'd be 1.45.
Ms. Cantor. Just, so this didn't have to be paid out because of...
No, it's, you know, design and engineering services.
And construction?
Well, construction.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, that's right. Construction.
This is just the engineering. It's construction services.
Yep. Okay. Anyone have any questions on the board? All right.
Move that the select board award the Cole Parkway Marine location in Phase One project to GEI Consultants of Franklin, Mass. in the amount of $162,500.
Second? Second by Ms. Cantor. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're done.
Have a good night. Steve, are you out there with the barge? Are you like...
I was out there today, yeah.
If you get it up, huh?
I'll see you. Thanks.
And Mr. Capri.
Evening.
How are you?
Excellent. Excellent.
So heavy machinery.
Heavy equipment. This is a bid we do about every three years. We go out to bid, and it provides us with a procured source of equipment in cases of any storms, emergencies, equipment that we don't have that we can use in the DPW. So we pick out what we think we need for equipment to go out to bid, and it makes it a lot easier because we do have storms in our, for whatever reason, we can use that equipment and, you know, procure it properly. So contracts have gone up. They've probably gone up 25% to 30% from the past. Last bid was three years ago. We were expecting increases because costs have gone up significantly. That's where we were, and it's a unit-priced contract we use. So it's unlimited, and then we renew it every, you know, five to three years.
And this is for them to supply us with both the equipment and the people to operate?
So it'd be operated. There's an excavator. There's a loader, a skid steer, a six-wheel dump truck, a 10-wheel dump truck. We have a small crew and a large crew. So if we had an emergency water break and our crew was tied up floundering, they could go over and do the emergency repairs. So it's set up.
Questions?
Am I only concerned this is all the bid? Did you talk to other companies as well?
We advertised, talked to other, you know, other companies and everything else. Yeah, we were searching for it. The big thing is, is if we need them, we need them. And some companies don't like us to just break into their schedule and change what they're doing for the day because we have an emergency. Some of the other local guys that might affect them.
That's one of the...
And they guarantee to be there when we need them, right?
They have been so far, but you know, there's always that time when they're in the middle of something that they can't be.
And then the equipment. Will you remember where you're playing at Humrock?
This is the Humrock one. That's a different contract, as you all saw. This is a, it's some of it's smaller equipment, the six-wailer and the 10-wailer, as well as the utility crews to do repair work. They, we use them a lot to do drainage. If we have to replace, you know, a couple catch basins or some collapsed pipe or a culvert or whatever, we can use those crews.
Any other questions? No? Anyone in the audience? No? Or any questions about heavy equipment? All right. Can I have a motion?
Move that the select board award the contractor to supply selected pieces of heavy equipment and crews to laminar construction in the amount not to exceed $49,500. This contract will have the ability to be extended upon mutual agreement for up to an additional three years.
Second by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor? Aye. Four zero. Motion carries. I'm sorry. Those are revised. Motion. I'm going to give it to you. As Karen mentioned, we're going to buy unit prices. Let me hear that. Sorry. I'm sorry. My last step just came in. I'm kidding. Sorry. Thank you. If you agree, we want, I apologize.
What's wrong?
They went from a set price to unit price, as Karen mentioned. I just want you to hear that. Okay.
Another motion? If you didn't vote on that, I'll hold it.
No, we have, well, first to the second, but... Do you guys resent that?
Yeah, I'd like to resent my prior motion.
Okay, thank you. Second to resent? Oh, do we have to do that? I don't want to.
Yeah.
Nope, so, second, all right.
Move that the select board award the contractor to supply selected pieces of heavy equipment and crews to laminar construction in the amount that is determined by the unit prices outlined in the attached document. This contract will have the ability to be extended upon mutual agreement for up to two additional years.
Second, Mr. Goodrich. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Four zero. Motion carries. Thank you. There are apologies here. All right. Moving parts around here. So I think, I don't think I see the people here for the...
They're on the hall.
Emergency sewer connection. We're pretty early. Yep, there. Hello. We know we're early, but if you want to start, do you need Greg Morris to be here or is it going to be?
Yeah, his whole, his, what, no, his whole 89 half COVID, for inform, it's a lot of...
Do you need Drew here?
Yeah.
Well, you know what, then? We could, if you don't mind, we could do the purchase and sale deal because I do see Dan Fennelly's here. Is that all right?
We don't think...
Somebody just told me we're waiting for, is it? I thought I heard, while many people were talking, I thought I heard that. Did I hear that? Did I? Yes. Okay, so, Mr. Orinberger, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
Dan, hand him up. Sorry for the...
Dan.
Please, we'll change.
Yes. So now the meetings go over.
Well, Morris is not here. I was going to speak.
I don't think I'm on the agenda.
Now he's on tape saying that. So we have with us Mr. Fennelly?
Yes.
Yes, from CPC.
We have a purchase and sale agreement that was signed by the seller for Morticay Lincoln.
So he didn't have to move, did he?
Pardon?
Mr. Orinberger didn't have to move.
Yeah, no.
Mr. Orinberger's representing the seller.
The signed PNS by the seller.
Yes.
So this is something that we've been working on for three years now, and I think this will close the books to get ready for the town meeting. And hopefully the town meeting will approve the purchase of the property and dwellings for 1.3 million dollars.
And for those of you who don't have the paperwork in front of you, this relates to the Morticay Lincoln property that the town agreed to buy two and a half, three years ago, I guess.
Yes.
And things got in the way, including especially COVID, and it was an estate issue too, so it was complicated. And, but I think we are seeing the light at the end of this tunnel. And it's a good thing to have the PNS in advance of the town meeting because now we don't have to worry about it not closing.
Right. So I think the good thing that came out of this was we've changed our procedure for the purchase of property in Situate, where we will and have now gotten two purchase orders prior to town meeting. I'm sorry, purchase and sale agreements prior to town meeting. And that will be the process going forward. So we don't run into a situation where we don't have any legal paperwork to move forward with the acquisition of the property.
Very good. Well, thank you for staying on this, Dan. I know it's been a long run, but it will be worth having that property in.
It's an awesome property, and the houses are, need some repair, but there'll be awesome facilities for the town to have.
Does the board have any questions? This purchase and sale agreement? Does the audience have any questions? Yes, Ms. Burbine?
Ann Burbine, 10th Avenue, Chris Road. People need to understand, yes, it's 1.3 million. We have already appropriated 900,000 for it. The additional 400,000 will be voted at town meeting.
Yes, and we voted as part of special town meeting, which means that we will be able to consummate the sale as soon as possible. We won't have to wait for July 1st for the funds to be available.
I just want people to know that it's not 1.3, it's really 400.
That is, I'm sorry.
It's an addition. It's an addition.
Chairman, that's a, it's going to be in the regular town meeting.
I thought this was going into special town meeting. No, Andrew?
No, because we also thought the 900,000 was already allocated, so we couldn't move forward with any of the preliminary things prior to it.
All right. Well, at any rate, and for people to understand, the price was increased due to the, the real estate market really has taken off in the past few years, and the open space acquisition we made on Board History further, you know, kind of put some pressure on the price. But at any rate, it's still less than what it appraised for originally. So we're still getting a good deal, and it would be a shame if we lost this property, so.
Yes, it's a, it's a, the purchase price is about 60% of what the appraised value was. And the appraisal was done two years ago now, at least two years ago.
Right.
So the expectation that we had to appraise it again will be, it will be much higher today than it was two years ago.
Yeah, just...
So it's still, I think, a good opportunity.
Oh, yes.
At a very good price.
Well, we're lucky that the sellers were motivated for us to preserve it as, quote, historic property and as open space on the river. Any other questions?
Is the contract been signed?
We're signing it tonight.
Yes.
But they've signed it, right?
Yes.
So Bill's, I see Bill's eyes. It's like, well, maybe we can all...
No, 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 no. He went to...
It's a good purchase for the great historical site, good property for the town.
Anyone else? I think the question is sort of outside of this, I mean, it's part of this, but I think this getting it signed and all that's great for tonight. My only question is, under the terms of the agreement, it says that the residents of the smaller onset property will vacate in 30 days. I don't know if there has, I didn't have a chance to ask any of these gentlemen before the meeting if there's any conversation about whether that's desired, needed, or is there, you know, would the town want to think about maybe a month, a month of rescinding? Because there would be benefits to the town, I would say, retaining someone there while we get our ducks in the box.
Just to explain what that is, is there's a very small cottage on the edge of this. Dawn led, Brenda led. Looked it, Dawn just had his hip replaced and he's doing some recuperation. So that's why it's 30 days, but that's something that the town and Morticay Lincoln Press had asked Dawn and Brenda because they may well like to stay there for a while as tenants. But it wouldn't, the main house and structure and all this, that's a whole separate.
It's to the right?
The right when you pull it?
Yeah, it's to the left. There's a little, right, pretty close road. There's a little cottage, like, right on the edge of the Baumro... I mean, right on the road is a garage. Then you go in and right on the left, probably about 100 feet beyond that, and then the main house is straight up ahead.
Well, I would definitely want to put a wrench into any of this, but if there's 30 days after that, we're going to, I'd have to figure out our next steps anyway, but I would think that that might be something we need. We might want to revisit, just with them, offline.
Sure.
Yeah, I have a following. Are you suggesting that we would simply keep them out? The contract says they must be out 30 days. But we would have the right to extend it if we own it. Yes, I just, my question was more for Jim and Dan. Has there been any contemplation or discussion along those lines about that residency?
We haven't had any discussion on that.
Right. I don't think it's an issue, so. Okay. No, it has no bearing on the contract.
If there is, just do it after we contact us.
Yeah, there you go. Well said.
We'll see. We'll see when it happens at town meeting.
Okay.
We got to get through that first. Yes.
Do you have other questions?
No.
Do I hear a motion?
We would like to move that the select board approve to execute the purchase and sale agreement for the Morticay Lincoln property pending town meeting approval.
Second?
Second by Mr. Vignani. All in favor? Aye. Four zero. Motion carries. Thank you, Dan.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
So I know I saw Drew come in.
Yep.
Yes, I did. So we have three people we need. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. So this is the item on the agenda to discuss vote, emergency sewer connections. 18 and 23 Morton Place, Drew Shealy, Board of Carp Director, Robert Morrissey, owner. As we know, Greg Morris is not here due to COVID. I wish I didn't have to keep saying that. And Bill Orinberger, if you'd like to come up, gentlemen? Gentlemen, want to explain what your situation is? I know this has a bit of history, this property, these two properties in particular.
So I got a Title V inspection on both properties on June 25th, 2021, that they were both in failure. So if it's feasible, as the letter says that I sent to you, if it's feasible for it to be hooked up to Town Sewer, that's what Title V says. I don't determine whether it's feasible. That's why we have... whether it's feasible, that's why we have moved on.
As the sewer commissioners, yes?
Yes.
Put our different hat on here. Well, if you'd like to explain to us what you're looking, asking us to do to them.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, okay, to read if Greg Morris couldn't be here.
Yes.
But basically Bob, going back generationally, is five of the homes on this property for an extended period of time. Uh, right in front of this, on 189 Front Street, is Bob Owens' outhouse that already is on, on the sewer, and has, as you said, the system, these are two small homes, that it's, Morton Place is actually a private land, Bob Owens' Morton Place, and I think this is one other house. You're going one other house behind me, that has this, as Greg said, he's gonna read this, and I'll submit a copy of that to. It's a tough spot, these pre-existing, non-informing, small lots, but anyway, Morse Engineering has observed the failing septic systems at Morton Place, owned by Bob Morrissey over the past several years, to perform survey and perk tests on these property with limited success, the presence of high ground, soil permeable store soils, failed perk tests, and property line setbacks to downgrade into butters, front seats, private residence, private residence in the situ, in. In the proximity, the situation would have or make the installation of septic systems that is probably extremely difficult, environmentally undesirable. Morse Engineering regularly permits over 100 septic systems annually in southeast Mass, many on challenging sites, and our recommendation that if sewer is available for this site, that the connection should be made.
All right, so that's the engineers' opinion.
Correct.
And your opinion is the systems were failing?
Yes.
As of last June?
January 20, June 21st, last year.
Okay. So, then we have someone else to weigh in here. We have information from Mr. Cafferty of town policy.
Well, the angel of death, angel of death, of course, sorry, guys. No, I, you know, reading through the policy, and I did not get Greg Morris's report also, is I think all options should be taken into consideration for a septic system at that location before it is tied into, you know, tied into sewer at that location, because we are trying to conserve as much sewer as possible to future areas that are on the list. This is an addition. I know Bob was back here, I think in 2014, we had a long discussion on it. You know, and that's, that's just my opinion. My thought was, if it's at all possible, the septic should go in there before we set, before we set up, which I think would be a sewer expansion, because it would eventually be all three units, that would be tying into that sewer system would be my guess.
Well, it sounds like.
What's the third name, Kevin?
I thought you said there was a third house in back there that was set up that would be potentially tying in.
No, but Bob has known that, and that's not there, but it got out, I would probably finish it.
No, but.
Yeah, the only two observations I would make, well, I should say, two, maybe two, that I'd make is that, well, the reason, Greg said, is this is a tight situation, Bob Owens says this isn't really susceptible to expansion or anything else to that effect, if there's a condition that, that two homes would be accessed to that law, you'd be okay with that.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's all, we're not looking to expand or do anything. To be candid with you, you could jog around 189 and get to the same result, but one of the things that Bob did is, he actually had to the right of that building, he actually had a right of way and access, and he actually gave that up with the neighbor, needed to have to do some expansion on, on his building, but I've looked at, actually ironically, right behind us, this board granted 25 Bevedan Road, that is right behind us, gave the same thing to them recent, fairly recently, and also 207 Tilden Road, the exact same situation, so, you know, there's the same situation which we have, and, you know, particularly in the Howard District, these are, these are very small lots, topography and every other thing, so I think it's, you know, I would suggest that it's appropriate use, and this isn't something where we're creating new housing or anything else, these are existing homes that have been there, pre-existing, they're gone back, how old are they, in several periods of time? And they are a failure. The only home the city would have is that hooked up to town, and I put it down in the section.
Questions on the board?
Well, I'll, I'll kind of preach what I've preached for a while, I think it's important that we add houses to our existing infrastructure to raise money for the funding of our sewer water treatment, and I think this is a small development, this is the ideal situation. I see poor situations like this, we want, we've talked about this, that we need to add, however many it is, 20 or so houses to our infrastructure, so that we can generate revenue, so that we can continue with improvements, and I, I think that this is, just falls right into that area of people that you can help, that helps the town, helps the houses, come back just a few times since I've been up here, and if the system's failed, it's failed, so. Like Bill just mentioned, there's other people that we've given to you for the same reasons, I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't extend the same courtesy to this resident.
So, I guess my thoughts on this are this, that I feel blind doing this, because I don't have the exact number of what our capacity actually is. Now, I totally agree that we need the money to go forward and to make sure, but I, I want to, because I'm, I understand, I want to do everything I can to get North City with, like, now, and every time we add another one, it becomes more and more, and I still, after two years, don't have a number of what we need in capacity for just the business district. What's that number? I don't know. Do I think this project is gonna destroy us, go over that line? No, so I'm gonna vote yes tonight. But man, does this get harder and harder every time one of these comes up. I still don't have that number.
So North City with is Area 3 on our map, extends a little beyond the business district, about 125,000 gallons, built out, not current, built out to zone, about 125,000 gallons.
And what's our current capacity today?
Permitted capacity is 1.6, our rolling average is 1.593 as of yesterday, or actually Friday.
Now, allegedly Cohasset voted to go forward with the sewer last week, I haven't got anything from them, but to go forward with the regional sewer last week, so if that's the case, we're not looking to put North City into our system, it's gonna go basically into health system, but we'll see if that actually comes to fruition.
So, three months ago, we talked about the INI, the $14 million that we had spent, I understand it's been a wet season, we were down to 80%, I believe, and now we're at 99.7%?
When we were in here with the sewer department, as well as the engineer doing the INI, they did do a presentation on where we were and what we were, we were not at the, necessarily the 80%. One question to us, why do we have so much INI right now? And the answers were, it's been a very wet winter, a wet summer last year, as well as in one of the documents we gave out, were a lot of the properties that have come online in the past, you know, year and a half.
We just got that also that the condos behind the new gas station, those went in about a month ago?
Riverway?
Riverway, they went in about a month ago.
And well, we still have Toll Brothers tying in.
And Toll Brothers continually adding.
Tying in units and units and units.
They're about two years ahead of schedule, Toll Brothers, am I right, Bill? And about two years ahead of schedule as to when they're gonna build them, when it's going into our system.
I, I gotta say, I agree with Andrew, we, when we talked about this initially, we got all these great reviews that we plugged the whole big hole in the dam, I think it was less than 80, I thought it was in the 70s, and then I was shocked when Will came before us a couple weeks ago and said we're back at 90 something. But it brings everything, I mean, this, this hasn't been that much more wet than any other project we've had, so I'm just confused, as I think Andrew was too, is where do we stand on this, you know, when are we gonna make an advance to North City, and this has nothing to do with it, system failed and it's two little houses, it's not, it's small picture compared to the big picture, but I think we need to understand the big picture. Because we're just getting conflicting numbers on it, we're just surprised.
Well, my question is, is this different than the hooking up Riverway? Are we setting any precedent here that, because Riverway was a failing system, and we agreed to do them, and they were, you know, they had had the opportunity to hook up years ago.
Riverway is on the system, so they have butted the street that has the sewerage line.
And is the question here that this is the frontage question, that the properties are not?
This does not front on the sewerage line, correct?
If, if they were on that, they'd be able to tie in by right.
But if they were on Front Street, they would, this wouldn't even be a question, they'd be able to hook up.
Aaron? Anything to add?
Yeah, I just, just quick comment, I, I, I only have one concern, I think it's bad system, it's in the harbor, it's in our flood zone, it's in our business district, it's the hoots of the town to, you know, support some of those improvements. The only problem I have, and is that I don't, I think that the location of that property and the market that we're currently in, they're not gonna stay as small little houses for long, I mean, if they're on sewer, so, you know, what, what we're really, I mean, I'm not, I don't know what your intentions are, but I know what the market could support is that it's, it's more than just the small houses being hooked up, and we need to know that that capacity is gonna get added sooner rather than later, I would think. The only question I have, and maybe it's for Kevin, is if a private, if, if, if the sewer line is extended on your private way, and there's another, there are other lots on that lane, lot, lot, street that you don't own, will they be, by right, be able to hook into that line, even though?
Potentially, by right, they would qualify at that point, I don't know if there are, I don't know.
That's where the line went.
I don't know how the layout is.
That's where the line went, so I think these houses are the first two, when you get past the street lot.
Right.
So the, the houses behind it wouldn't but the sewer, that's a philosophy.
But I don't think they would be doing a spaghetti line, they might, he would have to, the engineer would meet with Will, they would come up with a solution, they'd probably do gravity there, because you can, and that way you avoid the electricity.
But? It's downhill.
It is downhill.
So are you saying this will be a, I'm sorry?
So the follow-up question on that is, if in negotiating, you know, what system would be put there, if it's at a private expense, does the town, I mean, I'm just thinking down the road, if I live up, literally upstream from that, and I, and my system fails, that would be, I just wanted, you know, we've had this before.
They'll be in here again and saying, you know.
Come back.
We've earned a failure system, and we'd like.
Right, are we gonna be talking about a second line down that private way?
Well, two different conversations, right? It depends on what's put in for these two units, how big it is, whether it would have the capacity to accept any more units further up, and then it would be their sewerage line, whether they wanted to let someone else connect into that source.
No one has a right, no.
Right, I, I, yeah, this is.
These two houses and the one small house behind it, literally, the only three houses in all of City would have are not accessible.
Yeah, sorry, another issue that's more of a macro question.
No, I was, you were going on the path that was a change, this isn't a sewer extension where people would have a right to, but this is a, this is more like a spaghetti line connection than a, than us extending our sewer down Morton Place.
It, it would be an extension of the sewer system, it wouldn't be a spaghetti line, and then you get into that gray area, you know, is it, you know, private system, public system, a lot of times, you know, we wind up taking over those systems.
They're gonna run a sewer line up the street, and then the two houses will connect into that line, so it'll be a main, and the fact that it's more than one house that's connecting into it.
I just know Morton Place is not a public road, it's not publicly maintained, it has nothing, that actually, again, I don't want to get into all this semantics of complex legal, I mean, real estate stuff, that is frontage, Bob Owens, that frontage where the line goes in, it doesn't, Front Street, his first house, yeah? Morton Place, this isn't a public road, this isn't anything, no one has a right to use this, the sole person who has a right, they have no right to own the sewer line, is the one house that's directly behind the small house that's. The one that's behind it, Tony, I think it's a 25 on it, right behind the one says 23. See, if you go directly at Morton Place, there's one that's like right in the middle of Morton Place, and there's one nine and a half, this is like a rival.
So the ones on the other side have it, 17 and 18?
18 doesn't have it. This is for 18 and 23, 18 is to the right.
Yes.
And, and, and 23 is directly on Morton Place.
And 17, does 17 have it?
See, there's all kinds, off of Bevedan, there's all kinds of ancient rights away and all that stuff that runs in, all those things are on, on that scale.
True question for you, a failed system, can we just take a letter from somebody and say?
It's an engineer, because there's license on the one, yeah.
So is that, is that what we typically get?
That's what we typically get, that's what every single town gets a title, using the exact same inspection board.
There's no report that says Bob.
It's all in that.
Oh, oh, you just gave us an email.
No, no, yeah.
They're the wrong organs.
They forwarded that to.
Yeah, these are two official Title V failures that aren't even filed or.
So the, the Title V failure system can be determined by somebody who's a licensed operator, that it's a failure, the question comes in is, can a new septic be built in that same location? And, and that's, that was the question that I had, was due diligence, because I hadn't talked to Greg, he hadn't come in and seen me, so, you know, can, could there invent a new septic in some of those locations?
And we don't have an answer to that.
Well, that's what he read earlier, that it's.
Well, extremely difficult.
Okay.
Environmentally undesirable, I mean.
Oh, if you look at the configuration, Tony, that, that, I mean, 23, it's like a narrow strip of land, these are all old cesspools, originally.
Can you have a share?
Yeah.
Tony, one more question.
Tony just noticed, and the report from Morse Engineering was July of '21.
Right.
So what's been happening since July of '21?
I wasn't aware of anything since July of '21.
What's been happening since then? COVID. Everyone's been upside down backwards, so otherwise they've been doing what's necessary to keep it so it's not, so it's not polluted.
Well, they could be condemned if they're doing that.
That's why I was.
No, no, seriously.
So it's difficult, but the word is not impossible, but difficult.
I'll make a motion to pass it, it's a failed system, it's, and it's qualified letter, and Kevin's point is, could they put something else there, it's a pretty tight area up there, so. Anyone have any other comments?
No.
Do I hear a second, or are there going to be more discussion? Does anyone in the audience have something to say?
So it's either.
So I'll make a motion to approve emergency sewer connection for 18 and 23 Morton Place, pending connection, we're even with the DWD.
Second? I'll start. Second, Mr. Wiggrich, all in favor? So.
Good luck.
Well, maybe not, I have, I have. Yeah, qualified, so yes. It's not, it's not, um, but, yeah, qualified, so yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, four zero motion.
See, Bill.
I have to say, as the chair, when you're sitting here and you see the room filling up and you can't figure out, what's on the agenda that's upset you? I, I think I might know, but, um, right now we are discuss vote, new special event applications. Sorry. Sidebar. My apologies.
I think Karen's doing a great job, too.
Thank you. That's not what they were saying. Anyway, um, discuss vote, beach and back half marathon on May 15th. Hammarok Marshfield, Martine Palatier, and Anne Marie Winchester. Are they supposed to be here or not? Marie? Oh, they should be. I'm here. At least one. Are you Anne Marie Winchester?
My neighbor, yes.
Did you live on Ledgeway in Cohasset? Are you in Cohasset, Winchester?
I'm not at Cohasset, Winchester. I married into the family. I really didn't get that level of.
I knew some of the Winchesters. Anyway, yes, it is the Ledgway, Cohasset. Yeah, I'm married in the whole town. Okay. Because there was a K and B, a daughter, wasn't there? Anyway, never mind. I'm wasting.
It was controversial. She wasn't a daughter, it was controversial.
Okay.
We'll do that one.
Okay.
It's a good story.
Okay, I, I know it is, but. So, um, a half marathon, could you tell us about it?
No. We have a half marathon that is starting actually in Marshfield. Most of the course takes place in Marshfield, which, uh, it starts in the Brent Rock House Labs. And it will come all along the water, um, out to Rexham Beach, and we will access, um, the other part of Marshfield through the dunes. So there's like a pathway through the sand that we've used before that brings you out to, um, Hammarok. And that's the portion that will be in Situate, is that stretch. So the rums will come through the sand there, they'll take a left over the Julian Street Bridge, which will bring them back into Marshfield. Then they will head up through some of the side roads and then come back the, over the bridge that's by the bridgeway.
Oh, right, yeah.
Okay, so they'll come over that bridge, I'm not sure if that was called anyways, and then take a right and head back to the dunes and go back into the Rexham Beach parking lot. So it's a real short distance, um, actually, in Situate, but it is part of the, it's part of your town, so. So we've had to do this dual term.
Is this for a charity or something like that? Or is it qualifying or whatever?
No, it's, um, it is for a charity. This particular company, um, that, um, this is a lead company on, it's not such a race management, it's RaceWire, it's the lead company. And all of their races support the, um, high school boosters. So the boosters will be out, um, some of the students will be out along the course, they may have all the water stops, all of the critical terms on the course, um, and sponsor races, who will have to go back to the boosters.
What do you mean by boosters? High school boosters in Marshfield or Situate or Hoboken?
In, in Marshfield.
And, but how much of the course is in Hammarok? Parents? We might want a percentage here. A quarter of a mile.
Maybe about a quarter of a mile.
Out of like 13?
Probably closer to a half.
They have a toll.
You might need a toll, yes. I, I can certainly ask for that, yes. Maybe we can have them put a water stop in Situate and then the Situate high school kids can come and mend that water stop and, and it's.
I have to ask, why don't we do that participation?
Unlike logistics.
Yeah, yes, I get it.
So they don't want to handle the monitoring.
All right. Questions?
RaceWire, they do these events all over, everywhere, they know what they're doing. Is some of that, I'm sorry, over the, some of it's actually over the beach itself, or is that just over the gym?
So RaceWire is like the lead company on, they're a timing company.
Yes.
Um, I own a company called Social Race Management.
Yeah, okay.
So, and we work together on, so the RaceWire events, I permit for them because they know the permitting system better. So I usually hire the outside because I have races all over the place, so, um, that's where the connection is. So it's actually two organizations that are doing this. Now, I used to do a race for the, um, North and South Rivers watershed. And we did the same thing, we started in the Rexham Beach parking lot, we ran through the sand, which brought us into Hammarok, and we exactly along Julian Street, right around that, we could go right back over the bridge and back through, right, so.
Well, when you said the word dunes, I got a concern.
I know, I, I was like, dunes, really shouldn't say dunes because it's not like, we're not to have, supposed to have foot traffic in the dunes.
Right, right.
It's, it's sand, grass, and. Right, so there's.
Hydrants and all kinds of things.
Exactly. So there's, there's actually a pathway, when you come through the Rexham Beach parking lot, there's a pathway to the left-hand side on the riverside.
Okay.
Um, that keeps you in the sand. There's also, like, the Marshfield Roaders does, um, what they call the perimeter run, who was probably through this past weekend, that's Boston Marathon running, and they utilize that same pathway through the sand. So I know that there are a lot of groups that go through there, but it's not through like any of the, the grass vegetation or anything like that, it would be just on the sand.
And that's Marshfield anyway?
That part's Marshfield. That's not until you hit the, when you get through the sand on the other side, there's a, there's a dirt road before you get out to paved road, and that's where you hit Situate.
Other questions?
So we've had controversy with the Winchester family, we have.
This is the longest thing we've talked about.
We've had. Questions about the dunes or the sand and some RaceWire stuff? What else?
I have a question related to the permit, who's less.
I was going to say, as long as you can, see if you can make an opportunity in the Situate race order to do a water station.
I will ask them about that, absolutely. I'll, I'll talk to RaceWire about it. And I also, um, just waiting to hear back from the police station, get a call from them. That was my question, because there wasn't another backup, that was the one department that didn't hold on. So he did call me, Officer Buildings.
Yep.
Called me yesterday, I tried him back today, and I think it was, it's just a matter of connecting with each other.
So I would just think any, any permission would be subject to their input.
Yeah. Yeah, and, I mean, I. If the police say we need a detail here, if the, if the details come in, we defer to whatever safety, um, protocols that any of the police, PoliceWire can ask whatever they want, we do. Not a question.
Move to approve a special event permit to RaceWire slash South Shore Race Management for the beach and back half marathon on May 15th, 2022, from 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM, contingent on, we will from the Situate boost park.
Second by Ms. Cantile, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, four zero. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we are Board 143 Anniversary Party, 776 Country Way on May 14th, 2:00 PM, March Series. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
You did. Thank you.
So you're planning an anniversary?
We are.
Is it 70?
Two, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to tell us what you're planning for our little village in North City?
Yeah, nothing. So, uh, we have some live music up front, uh, on our little patio area. We're going to utilize the side of the building as well. And, uh, we want to have a food truck, we've already booked them, and, uh, I'm going to serve some beer and wine. From, uh, 2:00 to 6:00 PM on that day.
Questions?
There's a taco truck.
Taco truck?
Taco truck.
A taco truck. And we like to see activity in North City, don't we?
Yes, we do. And I came specifically, as much as I love to come to these meetings, to, to support Mark and Karen, they have done such an incredible job in North City. They really, really have. It, it's just amazing what they have brought to that corner. And we don't worry about parking, if people want them, they're there.
It doesn't seem to be an issue at all.
It's not an issue, no. Period. End of discussion, but they're great, absolutely great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll expect a bottle of wine.
Any questions? No? She was kidding to him, just for the. Soliciting crimes in town.
On camera, being recorded.
On camera. Do I hear a motion here? Uh, let's see, it would have probably two, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I have this, I just, a little editorial return, my emotion is, I was concerned when you guys went in, because I've been challenging. Yeah, not for the part. As you know, I've been there all this. We're frequent clients. Sorry, we're just going to get up.
I think it's a, it's attached, isn't it, Lorraine?
Didn't I just?
There's a wonderful selection as well.
Wait, I think I do, we can move this.
Yeah, it's in the back. Uh, all right, so I'm going to wing it, so move. Yeah, select, I know, entertainment and outdoor, whatever. Well, this is one that I could think of. Would be the select board, do you want it? Yeah.
All right, ready. Move to approve a special event permit for Board 143 Anniversary, Anniversary Event on May 14th, 2022, from 2:00 PM until 6:00 PM. Further, I can do them all.
Yeah.
Further move to approve a one, this one, a model coverage license for Board 143, uh, event on May 14th, 2022, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. And further move to approve an outdoor panel license for Board 143 Anniversary Event, May 14th, 2022, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM.
Second by Mr. Bagnani, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
And this is over from the wall, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we have to see it.
Me and her.
Thank you.
And I'm Torey, I'm in.
Pino, right?
Oh, stop it! And this is to, discuss vote, Holtech non-voting ballot question for annual town election. If I could explain, what we're talking about is that the Plymouth Nuclear Power Plant, as people hopefully know by now, is being decommissioned, is being decommissioned by a, a company that has a contract to do that decommissioning. And, and, uh, they have posited the possibility that they could be discharging water, wastewater into Plymouth slash Massachusetts Bay. Uh, we've had Kevin Weaver here representing Situate, he's on the, what's the name of that committee again, Ken?
It's an advisory board, uh, it's called Pilgrims Watch.
Pilgrims Watch. And so, um, we were asked if we could put, um, a non-voting question on our town meeting agenda, and unfortunately, it was too late to do that. So we have come up with the idea of having the select board vote to put a question to the voters of Situate onto the town election ballot, which is May 21st. And, uh, they've supplied us with a lot of information, a lot of language, we've had a few discussions back and forth, and we have drafted a question that I'm asking the board to vote on tonight, and if they approve putting it on the ballot, then to approve the language that we would put onto the ballot. So that's here we are. So, um, maybe I can read to everyone the language that we're proposing, and then the board can discuss whether or not they want to put anything on the ballot, and if, if the language is right or if it needs to be changed, but we need to do it tonight because we're running right up against the deadline to get it on. I think we've got 45 days and we're, we're right there. So, um, the language is, shall the town of Situate join with its neighboring communities in condemning the release of any radioactive waste into Plymouth and Massachusetts bays by any entity decommissioning the Plymouth nuclear, nuclear power plant, and further ask that all local, state, and federal officials take any and all legislative, legal, and executive actions necessary to prevent such, such discharges? That is the language that's proposed. So does the board want to discuss whether or not we want to put a question on the ballot?
I think we did, we teed it off last time, and I think that, um, that it's a very useful tool, and it's, if nothing else, it makes people aware that this situation is occurring, and I, I support it 100%.
I believe you can vote to support it. I'm just waiting.
Well, I'm just, I'm wrapping it all up in a nice, I don't want us to have made some mistake because we're literally, if we don't do this tonight.
You should take a vote to put that specific language on the ballot.
Exactly, that's what the, it's a two-part thing, in my opinion. Do we want to put a question on the ballot? Yes. And if so, is this the language that we would like to approve tonight? So we're, got our belts and suspenders on.
I, yes, all the reasons for the ballot. Again, I'll give the language, the language I, I love is the simplicity of it, it's clear, it's concise. My favorite term is luminous, it's clear, it makes, so that way folks can, can understand and talk about it and kind of understand. So, no, I, I am happy to support this language, it's very well done, I'm a chairman.
Exactly what I was going to say. And then we commend, commendations to our chair for synthesizing this into a really thoughtful thing to put in front of others. Well done. Well, I think the idea is to bring to people's attention and so that they understand that this is happening, and it's important that we all know about it, and that we keep in front of it, and that we support our, our communities all around us, as they supported us during the Coast Guard closure issue. So we all need to stand together when it's a regional issue. So, um, do I hear a motion to? I didn't do a motion, so.
Yeah, um, Lauren, I'm going to add this language. Uh, move that the select board direct a town clerk to place the following ballot question on the May 21st, 2022 annual town election ballot, subject to any language revisions made by town council and or the town administrator. Question reads ballot. Question number two, ready, the release of radioactive waste from the decommissioning on the nuclear power plant, is the language that you have already articulated. Any further discussion from the board?
No further.
I saw it handed in the audience, yes, sir? Could you raise your hand and address?
Close 10:22 to the row. Um, I commend the board and their language. I think we can strengthen it up, vote, by bringing to, to the electoral, um, the electoral voter, uh, the knowledge that Situate isn't alone in this. In fact, um, our senators, Mark, uh, Markie and Warren, as well as the representatives, have signed a letter to Holtech, pretty much stating what you just said. And the superintendent of the St. Wagen Bank National Marine Sanctuary has written a letter pointing out, and you use the word luminosity, Andrew. It's amazing that both the senators and the superintendent noted the lack of transparency in what Holtech is doing. In other words, we know that they may be putting a million gallons of radioactive water into Cape Cod Bay, but we don't know how radioactive that water is. We know that after the Fukushima nuclear reactor, um, problem, water was put into the Pacific Ocean, and the fisheries off that nuclear power plant were closed. In fact, some are still closed. And of course, that would be a disaster for our fishing industry. So I think, um, and I have two letters here, if you'd like to, um, use them.
Well.
One is the one from the senators and the, the representatives, the other is from the superintendent of the, uh, St. Wagen Bank, who works under the Department of Commerce and NOAA. So that there are more organizations involved with this than a local town. So there are more organizations involved with this than the local town, is my point.
Well, if I may answer you upon that issue, it is our hope that by the time people look at this question on the ballot in Situate, because this is a Situate ballot, it's a Situate election, that the group with Kevin and all the other people who've been working very diligently to educate people, that they use every platform possible to get the word out. So when the Situate voter gets to the ballot, they see that they have a very simple question to answer. And specifically, we did not refer to people by name, because who knows who's going to be the governor? Who knows who's going to be the attorney general? Who knows a lot? But this is a simple way for the citizens of Situate to say, we stand with our neighboring communities in condemning any. And I specifically did not mention whole tech, because in these days, who knows who's going to own, decide they're going to buy that entity. So to name an entity or to name people is probably not the best idea, but I encourage, my feeling is, and I think it's the board, that we're bringing this to people's attention, and that by the time they get to the ballot, we will get an overwhelming yes vote on this. And I'm not joking when I say we're literally up against the deadline tonight. So I don't think we're inclined to add or subtract language right now. But appreciate your input and hope you'll make your voice known.
Didn't we sign on the letter with our neighbors that went to the current officers?
We told, actually, we would sign on, yeah.
Yeah, so we are joining with letters to our...
Yeah, and we're not going to stop.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we're going to be supportive in any way we can, but this was a simple...
Yeah, I mean, to add, some of these things, as we know, it's things that change, you know, whole tech could be sold tomorrow, who knows? Maybe Elon Musk bought so much of Twitter, who knows? So part of that, having like, some of it, was to make sure that in the next 45 days that we're not, egg in our face because we mentioned something incorrect, and that's, we're making sure that we're getting the right federal officials and everything, to make sure that we're doing it right, and we're not naming someone who's not even there.
So you're not concerned that people might say, well, Plymouth Plant is 20 miles down this coast, we don't have to worry about it?
Oh, I, I, I have no doubt that people in Situate aren't concerned about what happens at Plymouth. I have no doubt. I, it would be foolish of us to not think. The people in this town don't understand that we live in a, that Plymouth Bay and Massachusetts Bay is our backyard, too. And maybe I'm being too, I, so, but again, I mean, we have up, you, everyone here who's interested in this issue, has up until May 21st to get the word out about what is going on and the issues related to it. And I think that if we try to get into the weeds too much, we're not going to be as effective as we could be. So, we voted?
We made a motion.
We had a motion. Did anyone else have anything they needed to say? No? So we have a motion, did we second?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. DeRid, second by Mr. DeNalvo. You nailed this though. And we voted.
So I made the motion on this, on accepting the language.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Hold on, okay. Let's do it again.
All right, let's try this again.
Well, you don't have to read them all. So I made the motion on that you...
But we put it on the ballot and accept the language as...
As we're...
As we're...
Second was the second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, motion carries, thank you. Keep getting the word out there, folks. This is very unusual for us, you know, we don't normally put questions like this on our ballot, so, yeah, I go to our... Now we have a discussion. So we have to discuss both approval of access and indemnity agreement with Kent Street Corporation to allow access over town property in Cole Parkway, Jim Boudreaux, Town Administrator.
Very simply, the corner of Cole Parkway, right behind where the Coast Guard Station is, not this winter, the previous winter, a lot of material washed into the bay right at that corner. It's impeding Mr. DeVall's ability to use a couple of those slips down the end. The only way to access it, to scoop it out, is to go on our part of the property and reach over. This is just an agreement to allow him to put his equipment on our property, scoop that material up, and take it away. He still has to go to conservation, get all his permits and everything, but he needs this.
So we're simply asking, we're asking ourselves to do what we ask other people to do, and that is to give an easement or...
Just to give him permission to go onto our property and stage his equipment. It's just going to be a, probably a big loader that's going to reach over and scoop the stuff out.
Any questions?
Is there a time table?
He's going to do it as soon as possible, he wants to... No, no. He'll get us permission from conservation, he's going to get the stuff out of there, because again, it's blocking a couple of his boat slips. When the tide gets low, they can't get in and out of those last couple of slips. So faster he can do it, the faster he can use those slips. We'll get him in and out, Tony.
He has all his permits tomorrow?
I'm not sure if conservation has finished signing off yet, but I know he's before conservation.
Motion, yes, thank you.
Move that the select board approve and execute the access agreement in connection with the report described, if you notice it, Ted submitted, but the consideration of Kent Street Corporation is a corner of...
Second, second by Mr. Bagnani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, motion carries. Thank you. New business? No, I'm just so excited for this schedule.
We are.
Well done. Discuss vote drain layer licenses, new license for Tottenham Enterprises.
Aye. Move, so all the documentation has been provided, maybe for that background, right? And move to approve a new drain layers license for Fox 355 Situate, Mass. And, can we vote?
Why not?
Move to renew a drain layers license for State Pro Contacting LLC, 41 Kavanaugh Road, Situate, Mass.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bagnani, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries. Discuss vote sewer betterment deferral parcel ID 14-1-49-0. We have that information, I think you said it was today?
Yes.
And this is routine.
This is routine. This person has had this deferral every year.
Yeah.
We just have to vote it and get it to the assessor and the triennial collector.
Any questions? Please.
Move to grant a sewer betterment deferral for the current year taxes parcel ID 14-01-049.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bagnani, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero.
It was very wrong, 14-1-49-0.
Oh, sorry, oh, I'm sorry, I read this wrong.
That's okay.
As amended.
Thank you.
Okay. Discuss vote new septic disposal license for Suarez sanitation pumping.
Move the select board approve a new septic disposal license to Suarez sanitation pumping to 854 Asher Street, Tottenham, Mass, Pool 278.
Second? Second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries. Discuss vote renewal of Hockford Federal license for Bert's Ice Cream. We'd like, when we hear the words ice cream, I'd just...
Where is Bert's Ice Cream?
It's a truck, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a nice pretty truck.
Ice cream truck.
It moves.
So he might taco it.
Where is it, like, yeah?
Do you want to sample the layers before you decide?
Like, yeah. Will the board select an approve to renew the Hockford Federal license with Bert's Ice Cream for the 2022 season, is it?
Yes. Second by Ms. Campfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries. This is my question.
Yes. Point of information which we may not have right now, do we have a max for, max?
We do.
On hockers? And where are we on that?
We're not here, the max right now.
Okay. I think it's four or five, off the top of my head.
Okay, I just bring it up because I know there was a, there was someone on that was trying to...
Just more trouble.
Okay.
We have more hockers?
More hockers, and a maybe another one.
You had to go to this section, you could go to this section.
Right. Okay, I'm sorry for that, I just, sorry, it is, yep. Did we vote on it? Yes, okay, thank you. Discuss vote renewal of Davis parking lot license in Homarock. This comes up almost every year, doesn't it?
Annual...
Seasonal renewals, yes.
Move the board select an approve to renew the parking license, lot license, parking lot license to Marke Davis, JPE, Billy Trust, Davis Parking Lot, Homarock, parking lot license for the 2022 season.
Second by Ms. Campfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries. Discuss vote one day wine and malt licenses for simply good catering at the Situate Harbor Community Building for free private events on following dates, April 9th from 6:00 to 10:00 PM, April 16th from 5:00 to 9:00 PM, and May 13th from 6:00 to 10:00 PM.
So move.
Move by Mr. Bagnani.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries. Liaison reports, anyone counting?
The only thing I would note is the special meeting that on Thursday evening, I guess it's Mr., Mr. Goodrich, this is your category, would you like to add?
Sir, I was trying to find the, I missed what you said, because I wanted to do my...
Of course.
Do now, council of disability, thanks, I'm sorry.
So, so on Thursday at seven? Six, six, thank you, six virtual meeting, the public is invited to see the same presentation we saw regarding the water treatment plant and their site considerations. And then that is in preparation of the special town meeting article to fund the new water treatment plant. So that's on virtual, and the website link is on our town website.
Well, I would like to clarify for anyone who's listening, the water treatment plant financing is the article that's on town meeting. And that is not anything to do with the site design at this point. It's simply a matter of how you want to finance the building up a water treatment plant. Hopefully, the neighbors will understand and the general public at large that what we saw was the beginning of the design of the water treatment plant. There will be plenty of time and plenty of public meetings about the actual, the siting plus the design of the plan. But we knew that the neighbors were concerned about what we saw for the first time two weeks ago, and they wanted to have input, which they should rightly have, as well as every, all the other boards and committees in town will be consulted properly. But because we didn't have that presentation and it raised questions in people's minds, but, you know, I hope people will keep separate the financial aspect of it versus the, what the plant is going to look like and where it's going to be. We put on the town warrant to propose an override to do the financing. If that fails, the water commissioners can still decide to finance it through water rates. So they're really two separate issues, and I hope people, if they have a chance, to look at this presentation from the engineers and ask questions. And I think it's really great that we can do things via Zoom now, because it's not easy to necessarily get engineers who are not, you know, that they could be in Worcester for all we know, to have to come to me at night in town. And I know there were some people saying, why don't we have it be personal? I think this is actually a better way to get more public input rather than less. So, does anyone here have any questions on the water treatment plant presentation? And we will be recording it, so, you know, people will be able to look at it after the fact.
And the only other meeting is tomorrow, the Hazard Mitigation and Update Virtual Public Workshop is being held tomorrow, also via Zoom at, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We can get more information on the website on that one, too.
Bagnani?
No.
Mine's not a liaison report so much as that I was, had a meeting with Paul Parkowitz from the Pier 44 Committee, I'm calling it that. And he brought in the sailing team boosters and the high school sailing team coach and the AD to talk about what, if anything, we can do to help accommodate what their needs might be. And I told them that they're exactly at the right part of the process, it's at the beginning, and so it'll be a good thing to be able to have their input. I obviously didn't make any guarantees about what might, they might get or not get out of it, but it's good to have their input at the beginning. And so I hope that people, when they see meetings about the harbor building, that you take the opportunity, those meetings have been via Zoom as well, to, you know, look at what they're talking about and what they're saying. So that's my report. Andrew?
Yes, I apologize for my inattention earlier, but I'm very excited. There's, so, Council of Disabilities, I don't know if it's actually fully assembled yet, they've ordered the Great Freedom Chair, which is a kind of a new chair for folks, so you're able to kind of get it for trails and other places, it's really cool. My understanding is now it might be positioned at the library, and it's subject to change, but that is the current place where folks can get it. But it's really fascinating how you can have the ability to go through some of our trails and go over really tough terrain and...
Is it like a dirt buggy?
No, no, it's like, it's...
In a rock yesterday.
In a rock. We have some lit.
Town hall, it has to be some...
Yeah. Anyway, it's a great asset for the town. It's a real asset for town, and we love all those trails, so.
I can put it together when I have a box of extra pots, don't ask me why there's extra pots.
The library thing?
Yeah, I'll put it together in my office, it won't fit out the door.
We made one trip to Ikea during college, and that's it.
That's it. It's a great whole, asset.
So do you have any correspondence to share?
I have a lot of correspondence to share. So, first one, candidates forum from the Citro Chamber of Commerce, that is going to be on May 5th at the Gahr Hall, from 7:00 to 9:00. So, again, town candidate forum, Thursday, May 5th, 7:00 to 9:00, at the Gahr Hall. I'm going to skip over, there was another correspondence from Comcast about what a surprise, we have a 50 cent per subscriber license fee. So look for that on your next bill.
I thought they gave us money.
Do we, hold on, do I have her on one? Do I have the deeds, rest of the deed form?
Anyway.
Let me circle back on that. I kind of confused those two.
Can we get them? Well, this is the license fee for us, subscriber.
Right, it's still on the bill.
It goes into our cable.
Right, it's still on their bill.
Yes, it's still on their bill.
Swing Into Spring, which is a networking and social event, also from Citro Chamber of Commerce, Thursday, March 31st, in March 31st, 6:00 PM, at Mulaney's, so that's a big new networking.
It's done.
It's done.
Done.
Oh, yeah, done, sorry. I'm just going through my list. Jeez.
That's probably the next one here.
Just keep going. Sorry, I'm just going down from my list, next, I'm supposed to read, I'm sorry. Hazard mitigation plan update, which is tomorrow, so not late on this one, 6:00 to 8:00. There's a Zoom link, get it on the website. So this is to talk about, this is done with Kyle Boyd, who is our Director of Planning Development, this is to talk about things like flooding, hurricanes, the risk of injury, and what they're doing to prepare for eligible assistance. April 30th, 10:00 AM, at the Citro Performing Arts Center, the Situate Sister City Committee for Souchon Brie. There will be a big celebration of the 10th anniversary of the friendship pact. So again, April 30th, 10:00 PM, at the Citro Performing Center, there's going to be all these official members, which is the younger delegation.
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM. No, I'm failing tonight, I'm sorry.
It's not 11:30.
There's so much, I'm just trying to... 10:00 AM, make it sure you're listening. 10:00 AM. 10:00 a.m. All right, and then, last but not least, it's about watching me forget something. Because our CARES Act is first been total, so we got new, more info from CARES, and Situate is now at 2.9 million, which is fabulous work by our finance team and everyone else here in town. I probably forgot something, but that's all.
I do have one thing to add, and it's so appropriate with these nice things, whoever gave us these.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's right. That we did get a letter from, there was a fundraising drive that was done by, in town, for, done by Tim Peters, my actual work, Andrew Law, and Julie Warren from Malanes. And they raised two truckloads, big truck, box truckloads of stuff that was shipped up to the church in Jamaica, Jamaica. And the minister there, the priest there, sent us a nice letter thanking the whole town of Situate for their efforts. And it was just great. Got shipped, literally loaded in a truck, got shipped to the next state of New Jersey and shipped over there, you know, very, very quickly to where they had to go. And the church was very thankful for all the work and everyone in the town that gave so much. Thank you to the town.
Anything else? Anyone else? Don't forget town meeting. Our thing topic. If anyone's not aware, town meeting is next Monday night at the high school. It starts at 7:00. There are various committees that actually meet at 6:30 to do last minute business, but the meeting of the town will start at 7:00 p.m. in the high school. And we encourage people to come. We are not mandating masks, obviously, but if you would wish to wear one, you are welcome to do so. And if you don't, you don't have to. But a lot of interesting things on the agenda and we thank all of our various committees for all the hard work they've done to get us to town meeting. So, anything else? Anyone? No?
Want to mention some of the exciting topics we'll be talking about?
No. Exciting topics. Thanks for putting me on the spot.
Well, we're talking about the water treatment plant, right? Big capital plans for that. We're talking about the recreational marijuana in town. We're talking about wind turbine. So there's not a lot of stuff, a lot of articles on there, but there are a couple that will be up for big debate and have a big impact on the town, so attend. Be heard.
Indeed. So do I hear on the motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 15th?
Move to set the minutes for the select board meetings now March 15th and March 16th, 2022, and move to accept and not release the executive session minutes for the select board meeting now March 15th, 2022, since matters discussed are still pending at this time.
Second.
Second by Mr. Van Noy. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries, 4-0. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
4-0 motion carries. Thank you, everybody. You see your motion.
It's true. What, the dancing last?
They have me trying to not burst out in the laughter.
I do all the things. I see a big idea now. I can never.
Yes, we are. I'm sure we must have.
Did you ever see these? We had to get a lawyer's permit, Andrew, man. No?
I thought all the women on your drive are wagons. I said, if you can drive, you can just drive.
She's like, what kind of carrier, buddy? I couldn't find this big wagon. Are these lights still on or are they, I really don't think they're going to drive.
My granddaughter in Florida is getting her license next week and she's already got the car. Here's a job, Mrs. Stone. I don't want to call you all that. I don't think you checked the valve. Yes, you have to. All of you, so. Okay, you're going to have to do that? Okay. I'll give all these to you as long as I'm.
And leave us out of this.
That's a good idea.[1784.12]